Good afternoon and welcome. At this time, we'll call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. First topic for discussion this afternoon is our Real Estate Assessor's Office Recognition. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Joining us this evening is Mr. Billy Butt, the Suffolk Assessor. He's also joined by a number of his staff members. Welcome, Billy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Very happy to be here tonight to give you some little bit of good news for our office in the city of Suffolk. So you've all heard me talk about the International Association of Assessing Officers, and they're sort of our guiding body. They're the source of our standards, professional development, and research, and mass appraisal, technical assistance, assessment administration, and property tax policy. The IAAO offers six designations whereby members can earn recognition as leaders in property assessment and valuation. Designations are earned after completing numerous courses and exams, and they demonstrate the designees' expertise in the assessment field. You may wonder why I'm telling you this, but I'm getting ready to let you know. We had recently, at the conference in Florida, we had four, or three recipients of designations. First one is Vernice Parham, who's sitting here in the audience. She received her AAS designation. Likewise, Julie Lee received her AAS designation. And Jessica Fly, who's here with us also, received her RES designation. And then this year also, Kevin Pryne received his CAE designation, but he got it at the conference the year before. So, but it counted towards this year. They also have the Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration, which is similar to a designation, but it's for a jurisdiction. It's a rigorous self-conducted evaluation that recognizes jurisdictions that utilize best appraisal practices in their offices. Again, you're probably wondering why I'm telling you this. Well, at the conference in Orlando, we received our Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration, culmination of a lot of hard work to get this, and that picture is our group that was down there to receive the award. IAAO also takes pride in recognizing significant achievements by individuals or organizations in the valuation profession. Various awards, such as the Distinguished Assessment Jurisdiction Award, are highly visible and respected in our organization. I'm telling you this because I'm happy to announce that the city of Suffolk received the Distinguished Assessment Jurisdiction Award this year from IAAO. Again, this is our contingent down in Orlando, and up on the stage receiving that award. Very proud moment for me. And lastly, the Virginia Cup. It's a competition between the states. It was started in 1990 by the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers, and sort of hijacked by the IAAO. And it's awarded annually to the state or province with the most new designees during the award period. Again, I'm telling you this because Virginia won the Virginia Cup this year for the first time since the year 2000. And the reason it's important for us is because two years ago, when this push really started to win the Virginia Cup, Kevin Pryne, my deputy, was the president of VAAO, and I'm the current president of VAAO. And also Suffolk, with our four new designees, had more designation, designate, new designees than any city in the Commonwealth. So we sort of put the state over the top on this And I want to end with this. You know, this is not the me show up here. This is about 23 people in my office that bought into a vision that Kevin and I both had for this office, and the results are, were received down there in Florida. These, my staff works really hard, and they get all the credit for this. Trust me, they're the ones that did this. And like I said, it's just a vision that I set forth for them five years ago when I got here, and they went out and worked their rear ends off, and we got this. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Any comments or questions? Billy, thank you very much for not only giving us this presentation, but for what you've accomplished, and I think has been roughly five years and maybe a couple of months, and being very familiar with what the situation was where you, when you originally took over the assessor's office. I mean, it's obvious with who you've surrounded yourself with. They say, you know, first thing a good leader does is make sure you've got good people to depend on and around him, and you've certainly done that. And there's no way that one person could have accomplished what you accomplished over, what has been accomplished over the last five years. So kudos to all the staff also. I think we are in a very enviable position as far as how those duties are being carried out. I would compare, you know, what we're doing to any other locality that I can think of. You know, we're up to date. It's accurate. You take care of our citizens if they have a question on them, and there's no more that we can ask for. So once again, thank you very much. And this recognition is well-deserved, and I think that, in my opinion anyhow, the most notable recognition that one can get is one to recognize by their peers, because they know the job. They know what you're up against, and you're being compared to all these other assessors throughout, you know, the state and the United States for that matter. So once again, thank you very much for everything you and your staff does. Okay, we'll now move on to our next work session topic, and that is concerning our mixed-use development, plan development, and text amendment concepts in regards to both. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, you had previously directed staff to review the mixed-use development zoning related to modifying conditions of that zoning. It was timely to also align some concepts that are in the comprehensive plan and the themes that speak to mixed-use development. So Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, is going to walk you through both of those items as we progress on working towards the zoning. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This afternoon, it's my hope to build off of our conversation we had last week at your retreat as we take a little deeper dive into the comprehensive plan and what it says, particularly as it relates to master plan communities, and how the comprehensive plan really encourages master plan communities, and as we work to implement, getting into the implementation stage of the 2045 comprehensive plan, how do we update the Unified Development Ordinance to align with that vision. So that's my hope for today, is to kind of walk you through some concepts, some of the building blocks that we have within the comprehensive plan as it relates to these master plan communities. And with that being said, identify some of the concepts that we have envisioned at this time to discuss with you all as we pursue, hopefully, some amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance to encourage and incentivize these mixed-use developments and master plan communities. And as the manager stated, I will touch on a concept as we have, as it relates to extracting yourself and modifying a mixed-use development, should you be in one today, and how we can handle those moving So with that said, the comprehensive plan itself, primarily a land use document, you all know that, but at the, at the beginning of the plan, it identifies a handful of principles, six to be exact, that are designed to be visionary, and really, should they be implemented and leaned into, would offer a depiction of what the desired future Suffolk would consist of. Like I said, there are six overarching ideas that led to the crafting of these six principles, and they include maintaining the focused growth approach and expansion of the growth opportunities, ensuring a high quality and character of development. We discussed that last week, as we look to develop a development review matrix moving forward, coordinate transportation and land use considerations, going back to adequate public facilities, ensuring that the infrastructure is in place to support proposed development, protection of our natural resources and agricultural lands, the promotion of synergy between economic development and land use, and lastly, once again, we discussed this, supporting fiscally sustainable land use choices. We talked about some of the key actions, and I want to go over a few of those again today, but this all comes back to master plan communities, and how we can encourage those, and how we can benefit from those throughout the city. So here's one of those key actions in the comprehensive plan, but reviewing, revising the current development regulations, including the UDO and the zoning map, to improve compatibility with the comprehensive plan. And priority areas for consideration include opportunities to promote master plan traditional neighborhood developments. This is a new land use type that we created through the development of the comprehensive plan, traditional neighborhood. That's something that you, if you look at our land use designations within the comp plan that you see, that you previously did. Review and update incentives and land use regulations that support traditional neighborhood Promoting master plan developments on certain sites. This really includes those larger assemblages of acreage that you have, contiguous undeveloped property, that lends itself to being developed as a whole instead of piecemealed. And that was really one of the key reasons we lean so heavily into encouraging master plan developments throughout the city. Here's another one. Continue to promote and encourage mixed use and plan developments throughout the city in appropriate use districts, understanding that use districts consist of a variety of primary and secondary uses. And here we have, continue to develop implementation tools that will help achieve an appropriate jobs-to-housing ratio, and the continued development of new and expanded incentives that encourage mixed-use development. So the reason I share these is the, it's a very strong theme within the comprehensive plan, and rightfully so. The reasoning there, during the comp plan update itself, folks expressed a great deal of pride in our existing master plan communities. Think Harborview being at the top there, Hill Point right along the way. But the pride that they have within those areas of the city, it's not surprising to the nerdy planner in me, but you have a master plan community consisting of a variety of different uses. The idea that it operates kind of like a small town in and of itself. You can live, work, play, do your shopping. You have everything you need within your neighborhood, and that's kind of the goal with a well-designed master plan community. Some of those benefits include the integration of neighborhoods through shared open space amenities and vehicular pedestrian connectivity. The fact that, like I just shared, they can be self-sustaining when balanced appropriately. And then through design, they foster this feeling of rootedness, community cohesion, and personal identity by creating an emotional bond with the location. That's the nerdy planner in me, so please bear with me. Inherently, they do encourage a mix of diverse but complementary use types, which once again comes back to fostering some harmony. So I wanted to touch on first here, from a conceptual perspective, our solutions for modifying existing MUDs throughout the city, and kind of paving a path for how to modify them moving forward. But you may recall the ascend rezoning that you all considered several months back. One of the more difficult considerations with that application included the fact that they did not have all the support of the community in which they were located, because there were a collection of 14 different parcels that made up the MUD that it resided in. So they were able to get, I believe, 12 signatures on that application of adjoining property owners, but they weren't able to get them all. And that proved problematic on our end, because at that point, they're trying to modify a master plan community in which there was not consent of all parties. And obviously, the considerations, when you are looking to, it's difficult to make modifications, or to be okay with someone making modifications when it is not consented across the board in one of these communities, because they're designed to work together. And a lot of the considerations, a lot of the makeup of these communities, they're reliant on each other and the use types contained therein. So as the manager noted, we all, you all directed us and the Planning Commission to take a look at this as it relates to future modifications to the MUD, and how to allow for either an extraction or a modification when there's not 100% consent amongst the community. Essentially, how do we solve the issue of allowing one property owner veto power when someone wishes to make modifications to their plan development? So with that being said, we're looking at this in two different ways. The first being existing MUDs. How do you modify moving forward? And the concept that we have landed on is provided that two-thirds majority within, of the existing property owners that can constitute that mixed-use development are signatories to the application, or conversely, should they have the consent of the Property Owners Association. In that case, we would allow for someone to move forward with modifying the MUD. Now, that relates more to the master plan associated with it, the design guidelines associated with that master plan. Where it gets a little bit more challenging is what proffers are associated with it. If there's not 100% consent amongst property owners, and the property has been subdivided, they can only modify proffers for the properties in which they have consent for. So we cannot modify, they cannot modify proffers for a property that they do not own, essentially. So in those instances, we'd be working off of two different sets of proffers, potentially, should they not be able to get 100% consent. But we'll certainly navigate that once we get there. As it relates to the broader district, if they have the consent of the Property Owners Association or a two-thirds majority, nothing would prohibit them from pursuing a modification to the master plan associated with the MUD and those ever-important design guidelines, which are essentially their own zoning regulations that they create as a part of the MUD. So future MUDs, how do we solve this problem moving forward? I think there's a pretty simple solution here, and that's, as the applicant, they identify that for us within their design guidelines when they submit for a rezoning. It could be similar to what we are proposing for existing MUDs, but that essentially puts the ball in their court as they pursue a rezoning to our mixed-use development overlay. So moving along, I wanted to discuss some broader concepts as it relates to master plan communities. There's a lot of food for thought here. There are a lot of things that have changed over time. Our, our MUD, our mixed-use development overlay, was created in 2005, so it's pretty old at this point. And there have not been a lot of changes to this particular part of our Unified Development Ordinance at this point. So these are a few of the items that require some close examination as we move forward with, hopefully, incentivizing and encouraging these types of developments, the style of development under the newly-adopted 2045 comprehensive plan. So one of those being a jobs-to-housing ratio. You may hear us talk about that when we present these cases to you all for consideration, but what does that mean? So with, with our MUDs currently, they require compliance with a specified jobs-to-housing ratio of one to one. One job for every one housing unit proposed. For MUDs, as originally envisioned, you're thinking more miniature downtowns. Think Town Center and Virginia Beach, among others. So in those environments, yeah, that's not that crazy to be able to achieve. But here in Suffolk, I think we've learned some lessons over the last 20 years. It's pretty difficult to get, to get commercial density that will allow for someone to develop from a residential perspective, that allows them to achieve this one-to-one. It's also terribly difficult for us to enforce. Generally, the phasing of developments will occur with residential coming online first, and then the market coming to you on the commercial side of it. And that just puts us in a position where it's, it's hard to achieve compliance, at least as it's truly outlined and intended within our MUDs. How do we calculate this one job? It's broken up into two categories, and this, this is problematic too, because there's such a broader spectrum of jobs out there that don't cleanly fit into either one of these categories. But folks applying for a rezoning to our MUD today get credit of one employee per 400 feet of retail service use, or one employee per 250 feet of office space. Like I said, there's a very broad spectrum of uses that just aren't incorporated there, entertainment being one, which, which is certainly on the rise. Certain space, like makers spaces, say, small scale manufacturing at the kind of craftsman level, things that you certainly would want to encourage in these types of environments that there's just no clean way to get credit for. Also, going back to when we created our MUD back in 2005, things in both the retail and office markets has changed drastically. I mean, office and retail were both heavily impacted by COVID, you know, several years ago, but also looking back at some of the market changes across Hampton Roads, across the country, and the impact of the internet and how folks conduct their retail shopping at this point, and how that has impacted that environment. So we kind of want to look at it a little differently. We want to make it, make sure it works for Suffolk, and I'm not here today to outline what that is at this point. It's a discussion we need to have with our Planning Commission Committee and ordinances, but ultimately, we, we're going to strive to achieve a jobs-to-housing ratio that aligns more closely with Suffolk as a whole, not just this one-to-one, which can seem relatively arbitrary. So one of the methods that we can lean into here is identifying what actually incentivizes some creative solutions to encourage enhanced uses and diversity. And we talked about a few of those during the retreat, and I'm going to get into those a little, a little bit deeper here in a moment. But we also want to place significant value as it relates to community spaces and traditional neighborhood design. One thing that we have witnessed here in the city of Suffolk as it relates to our mixed-use development overlays is folks utilizing it to get, not necessarily create a traditional neighborhood, but to create a bunch of different pockets of uses that don't interact with one another. So think big box retail at the front with, you know, apartments or townhomes at the rear, but really no way to connect them. And that's not the intent of the mixed-use development overlay. So moving forward, we want to make sure that we are getting these pods of uses, well, first integrating them, and then making sure that they're, they're connected to each other as well. And community space, shared community space is really important to that. And that's another key theme that comes out of the comprehensive plan update, is making sure that developers get credit for making good decisions as it relates to design. So this is more for discussion today, but some of the concepts So this is more for discussion today, but some of the concepts that we're envisioning at this point, reducing the overall required jobs to housing ratio. What does that mean? At this point, we need to do some research, identify what works for communities like us, identify what we as a city overall look like from a jobs to housing ratio, and we need to identify what ratio works best for the city. I hinted at this, but we need to identify some incentives as it relates for good design, that being a key. We need to make sure that these master plan communities are truly master planned at the end of the day. The creation of community spaces, composition of diverse use types, inclusion of affordable housing would be a crucial incentive and/or providing highly desired uses in jobs. Need to identify what those may look like, but not all jobs are created equal, but we are all better for the balance that a diverse makeup has for the city of Suffolk. So these communities in the city of Suffolk are better for the diversity in which they allow for. So some of the incentives that come along with proposals that would incorporate some of those elements that I touched on include density bonuses, for instance, that would allow for a number of units above and beyond a percentage generally above what is permitted as a matter of right. This, you know, extends beyond just our mixed use development overlay, but thinking more individual zoning levels. Or in the case of mixed use developments, if we're getting really creative use of community spaces, a really great balance of diverse use types, highly desired land uses and jobs, for instance, looking at that jobs to housing ratio and perhaps allowing for a reduction in certain cases. And moving forward, something that we can look at and research a little bit more is how to enhance design criteria and place added emphasis on the minimum design criteria as it relates to the design guidelines that we receive currently for our mixed use developments. They're pretty broad. These are districts that are built on flexibility, which I certainly understand. They need to be flexible enough to allow for development to adapt to the market. However, what can we really nail down during the rezoning process? The design guidelines allow us to do that. So from a staff level through some regulatory regulations that would be found in the unified development ordinance, really outlining what these communities should include from a design perspective would benefit us across the board. So that concludes my presentation for you all this afternoon. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have as it relates to some of these broader concepts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Counsel, questions or comments? Counsel member Rector?
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Kevin, thank you very much for that presentation. Like a lot of things that are in part of our U D O, this is probably another area that could definitely use a little fine tuning. I just want to be clear because, I mean, even after having served on the planning commission for 16 years, I get confused about mixed use development things. It is not a zoning classification, but it is a permitted use within certain zoning classifications, correct?
Yes and yes, and I'll clarify. We allow for certain mixed use types within our use table within individual zoning districts. For instance, mixed use dwellings are permitted as a matter of right in our B2 zoning district. That is what the Bridgeport Development has utilized to develop what they have up off of Bridge Road. Separately, a developer can request a rezoning to our mixed use development overlay. It's called an overlay. It's not necessarily a true overlay as it's a zoning classification built on the flexibility that allows them to basically create their own zoning guidelines that we evaluate against the comprehensive plan at the time of rezoning. I mean, there are a half dozen of those developments throughout the city.
And then I guess, given, you know, what the mixed use development thing is trying to accomplish and what you talked about here with sort of live, work, and play all within close environs to one another, is there a minimum acreage? Is there a minimum size that we would look at? Is that in the SCOD guidelines for these things?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and the answer to that is yes. Depending on where you are in the city today, the regulations are different. But if you are considered a suburban site, you have to consist of 20 acres or greater to qualify for our M U D. If you are an urban infill site, and the way the Unified Development Ordinance identifies that is basically being within the 58 bypass ring, so close to downtown, at that point, you can qualify with a minimum of five acres.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I might have other questions after I listen to the other council persons.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
If not, Mr. Wine, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I don't know when there's going to be something in particular that's presented for our consideration, but I think you're definitely heading in the right direction. And I believe this is how the process is supposed to work. The M U D question that came up, I think, was in January or February, and caught a little bit of heat because, you know, we were doing something contrary to what we had coming out of the gate, but that's kind of what you got to do sometimes. But what you do is you look at it, if, I mean, if it makes sense, you do it. We had the latitude to do that. Now we're coming back to address that particular situation so we can look at it in depth to hopefully not have to go through that same process again. In other words, learn through our experiences is what I like to say now, we learn through our experiences. I think when we're looking at incentives, and you clarified something for me, and I appreciate Councilman Rector bringing it up and asking you the question about M U Ds and where specifically can they be located, but I'm not sure that I realize that depending on what designation they were being proposed in also had requirements as to acreage if they were in suburban district versus downtown or whatever. So I guess that kind of places an incentive. I don't know if so much an incentive as it is. Well, that's a guideline, but when we talk about incentives, I don't know if we are even allowed to do this, but the city itself is so diverse that we know in particular areas we really want to promote that type of development, not preclude it from being someplace else, but have our incentives be able to look at particular, I mean, I don't know what to call them, you know, overlay districts or areas or whatever, however, it's enumerated on a map, that if you have a mixed use development, we really want to encourage mixed use development in this part of our city. Not that we don't want to, we still want to encourage them, but we really want to provide an incentive to have that mixed use in a particular part of our city that maybe really needs to have a mixed use development that will conform with the neighborhood, conform with the comp plan to a higher level than maybe someplace else. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, or if it's even possible to do that. But if there's some way that we can do that, that would be great. Some of the suggestions you had as far as the two-thirds of the owners or the HOA is a perfect solution to what we had to deal with around the first of the year because that was 100% or nothing. And I believe we were, you know, when I looked at it before we voted, I couldn't find another city that had that requirement where it was 100% of landowners or nothing. So I appreciate you addressing that. The jobs to housing ratio, you're exactly right. I mean, from a commercial standpoint, as far as the economy is concerned, you know, so much, so many jobs now are not done in a brick and mortar building. So we need to look at that and make sure that that stays balanced. And, you know, if we can, if we can attract that type of development, if we can incentivize it to where the growth is where we want it to be, then from what I've seen of mixed use developments, I went around in 2005 when somebody came up with the brainstorm, but when I look at the ones that we have in our city now, I mean, they are not only doing well, but they're doing very well on both sides of the spectrum, on the housing side and on the retail side, as far as generating the retail side, business side, generating tax revenue, and then the housing side, be able to, is really accommodating the type of housing that we need right now, the type of housing that people want, which for the most parts, wanting to, you know, wasn't like it was when I was growing up, everyone wanted a big house and a white fence and three acres to cut grass. I mean, I don't think anybody's doing that anymore. So obviously, with the number of folks that are relocating to our city, you know, we're providing or the opportunity for those type of housing projects. And having just gone to the regional state of the economy, one of the top priorities or concerns is housing. I mean, affordable housing, yes, but housing, period, with more affordable housing. And then if you look at this morning, I think it was in the newspaper in regards to Virginia Beach, I think, making allowances for affordable housing and significant incentives for affordable housing. I think that's something we're going to need to look at also as we move forward. We've talked about it, but maybe see what's going on, what Virginia Beach comes up with and try to incorporate some of those initiatives also. So Counsel member Rector, did you, did you have that second thought before we move on? All right, does anyone else have a question or a comment? Hearing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Keep up the good work. I'm curious to see what you come back with.
All right, that concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Early Childhood Development Commission, Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, Historic Landmarks Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, Local Board of Building Code Appeals, Paul DeCamp Community College Board, Suffolk Clean Community Commission, the Planning Council, Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and Southeastern Public Service Authority. Item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically Tax Map Partial 25 asterisk 45A.
Counsel, a motion has been presented for your consideration. What is your pleasure? Counsel member Barlow?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from counsel member Barlow. Counsel member Rector?
Yes, second, excuse me.
Second from counsel member Rector, thank you. Present, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 P. M.